Board meeting, Gio, we're all set, recording.
Yeah.
So we will begin with a, see if there are any modifications to the agenda.
The agenda, I propose a modification to the agenda that we move item 5.1, public comment period, above 4.1, Learning Forward ICSD Student Curriculum Advisors, so that the one person who has signed up to make public comment doesn't have to report as soon as they do that. Second.
Any objection from our board colleagues? Trish, you guess that modification to the agenda. Fantastic. So we'll begin with our first agenda item, which is public comments. And Moira has the list of names.
Judy Steele. Good evening. My name is Judy Steele and I started teaching in the Ithaca City School District in 1974. I retired in 2014. My entire career was spent dedicated to the primary students in our district. Character education was always an integral part of our curriculum. As teachers, we taught the importance of treating others with respect, kindness, and being responsible for our actions. Chief among them was honesty. We as the adults were the role models. You, as our leaders, are also role models. You should be demonstrating those same character traits as you make decisions regarding all members of the Ithaca City School District. That includes teachers, all support staff, students, and retired teachers. We also taught the children that everyone makes mistakes. And it's okay to make mistakes. And then you take responsibility for your actions and make the situation right. The disrespect that we as loyal and committed professionals have been shown is deplorable. Until recently, I was so grateful to have good healthcare benefits. I'm one of the lucky ones so far. It's heartbreaking to watch friends and colleagues suffer physically, mentally, and emotionally as they are denied proper healthcare while dealing with serious health issues. And I'm fearful that someday I may need good healthcare and it won't be there. I'm appalled that you say you need more data when you've received so many letters and testimonials regarding situations that Ithaca City School District retirees have experienced and are currently facing. As you know, the news is full of documentation that Aetna Medicare Advantage and other private insurance companies are getting rich off of our tax dollars while denying people proper and much-needed healthcare. Shame on you for not correcting your mistake.
For the public comment, I know we did not change the agenda item to also include item 5.1, but I'll presume that is okay. Excuse me, 5.2, board responses, but I'll presume that is okay for our board colleagues. Are there any board responses?
Sean, I'll just say thanks for coming in and sharing that. I happen to agree with you. But I appreciate you saying it and saying it so clearly.
It's funny, I was going through some paperwork the other day and I don't have Medicare, but my son has Medicaid and it's part of an MCL, Medicare organization. And in that paperwork was a stack of appeal documents for medication he needs to keep him alive. And so I guess I can say I can very much relate. And something does need to be done because it's not fair. Life is too short to spend all that time on phone trying to get healthcare that should be given. I mean, you have, we have insurance companies arguing with doctors. That's what people are dealing with. I know this because I have dealt with it and it's, it's, it's despicable.
I guess I'll leave you to speak. It's very difficult for me. I am a retiree and I've been involved in the changes that have happened with retiree health insurance. And I, because I'm a retiree, because I've got many, many friends and family members who are also retirees or experience different forms of healthcare for the district. I have spent the last five years deeply involved asking questions. Every time we get a letter or at a phone call, people say, this is what happened. I ask questions. And I have to say that I have yet to see evidence that the denials of service under Aetna for our people would have been covered by Blue Cross Blue Shield. I have asked questions and it's been come clear that some of the people who are writing to us are, have misunderstood what they've been told. And I've read all of the things about Advantage Plans and it's getting very bad press. And that concerns me. But again, we're, one of the reasons we are asking for more data is because in all of the, all of the cases that I've looked into it, I haven't seen that, that what people have under the Aetna plan is inferior to Blue Cross Blue Shield. We are relying on experts in the healthcare field and, and legal counsel as we try to negotiate making changes. And we are looking very, very seriously at making changes. But we need more information to know that what we're doing is the right thing to do. One thing that really concerns me or that I have a lot of questions about is exactly what has been the experience of our retirees with the preauthorization that Advantage Plans require. So that's one of the things that we are currently engaged in doing an audit of. So that we have actual data about what has happened to our people. Not data that comes from, you know, nationwide examinations of Advantage Plans. Not all Advantage Plans are the same. We have a particular Advantage Plan. So I, you know, this is, has been incredibly painful and frustrating for me to hear from people I know. But then finding out that, that what they understand is not necessarily what has happened. And also to hear people, as you did Judy, express fear about what might happen. We, so we have to be very, very careful. We are responsible for the taxpayers' money for this district. And so if we're gonna make changes and, you know, going back, I wish I knew what I knew now two years ago or five years ago, I would have asked different questions then, the kinds of questions I'm asking now. I know a lot more than I ever wanted to about insurance, about healthcare. And I still feel like every time, you know, some new question comes in, I'm like, I feel like I don't know anything, even though I have spent five years deeply involved in asking questions. So all I can say is we are in absolute good faith working on trying to understand where we are and what is the best thing to do about it. And, you know, I, personally, I have to say, I, it's very, very disheartening to have people speak to me the way you just spoke to me, shaming me, shaming us. When we are really, truly doing our best, I've spent way more time thinking about healthcare than I, the time that I wish I was spending more visiting schools and being concerned about the education of children in this district. And I'm sorry for speaking my truth, I would say.
It is clear that this is, will continue to be a significant topic of discussion amongst the board, amongst our retirees. A number of us have worked in the school district, friends, family, who this impacts directly as well. I had the privilege of listening to a group of Ithaca College students last night remind administrators, borrowing from a quote from Dr. King, of the fierce urgency of now, they kept repeating their urgency. And so I will tell all retirees is to know that all board members understand the sense of urgency. It seem like we're waiting to get more information. The goal is to try to provide the best long-term decision. That it's not a reactionary decision. So we're not back here again in a year trying to have the same conversation. So humbly and respectfully, we're grinding. This is probably an issue that we've spent the most time and attention on this past year. Both small conversations, large conversations amongst the board. And I hope folks have received the legacy update. We hope there are more updates to follow. And I can, I can't assure folks, I can tell you from my perspective, it is something that we are working on diligently to try to find a mutually agreeable solution that honors and respects our retirees. Folks know, I don't like transitions. So the pause sometimes just there to give us a transition. So thank you for coming to share. More information will be happening. We will continue on with our agenda. That includes a presentation that will be facilitated by Ms. Grover and Ms. Talbot. So Learning Forward ICSD Student Curriculum Advisors, I am, this is new to me and I am excited to learn.
So in this transition to open with gratitude for your service to the board and for the service of our educators in the past, present, and future, we wish to highlight our attempt to authentically partner with students as leaders to center the perspective of students in our curriculum design process. So five years ago, when Lisa Sahasravade and I led the first anti-marginalization curriculum writing workshop, at the end of it, in our deep breath, we said, ah, that was, that was phenomenal. What would make that so much better is if students were a part of it. How are we gonna do that? So two of the tenants of Learning Forward ICSD are partnering with students as leaders and a multi-year commitment to anti-racist anti-marginalization curriculum writing. So tonight you're going to hear from some of our students who we were able to work with this summer, provide some feedback to educators participating in the curriculum design process. Thanks, Ms. Grover. I'm Lily Talbot. I serve as the Deputy Superintendent for Ithaca City School District graduate. I'm gonna ask each of these fabulous people, and Elijah, if Elijah is on virtually, and they're gonna share all the wonderful air. So I'm gonna ask each of them to just introduce themselves. Say, great Adrian. Where are you going to school? I won't put you on the spot too much. You should start with that. Cool? All right. Lovely. Lily, you wanna start?
My name is Angelie and I'm a senior at Ithaca High School.
My name is Lindsay and I'm a senior at Ithaca.
I'm Elijah and I'm a freshman at the high school.
Wonderful. All right. I would say probably our most, some of our most exceptional feedback producers and collaborators with educators. Do you wanna talk a little bit just in general, like how would you describe the curriculum as being curriculum advisor role? What were some of the things you want to do? You just talk. Sure.
So we initially attended workshops to learn how to give good feedback, like what makes good feedback? And how do we give feedback in a way that's not insulting but also is actually constructive? So I think that was really important and a good way to start. And then from there, we were assigned curriculums to look over and that's I just wanna say anything.
Well, there was a ser, we were given a survey about the type of curriculum we would look at, whether you want to look at one specific curriculum front to back, like the whole thing, or like a piece of many, or like the grade level you wanted, or the type of class it was. Just if you wanted something very specific, you could get it as long as you were able to be, as it, as long as you're able to be a part of that.
I feel like they both covered kind of the entire start of the process. But we also got to look at, at different examples of what like type of feedback level was for. So we can really see, practice what we should do.
They also talked about different levels of feedback and different levels within curriculum. Is this just stat? Is this maybe the student think more about it? Is this maybe the student problem solve? And then I think that was the final, problem solve, apply to their own lives and learn effectively. So.
And, and we gave this feedback in the form of like a, a letter, I think.
And we had like a table for like feedback that we could give.
What were some of the key pieces of feedback that you remember giving? You might even wanna describe one of the units or one of the lessons and some of the ways that you tried to either make it more engaging or more connected to students' lives. Can you give us a couple of examples, maybe?
Yeah, I can start. So one of the things, one of the so the feedback I gave was centered around making curriculum more like interdisciplinary rather than each curriculum standing alone. You could, especially classes in the high school and middle school, could teach curriculum in in conjunction with each other. So in two separate subjects, you want to teach different curriculum but have them be connected in some way. I thought that was really important, especially as like new fields can be introduced on and things become more interconnected.
I had a history unit and it was talking about when is violence necessary? And it was like, it was a very difficult lesson to look at and think. And like, because it could go very dangerous if you gave that feedback, but it also be not. There was an opportunity, there was a chance you could not give enough feedback to me like this and like miss that messing it up. So it was, I made sure to look over it multiple times and think about how would my, what would my experience be if I were to be in the class learning about this? And I remember giving a lot of feedback about the language it was using and how it was spoken, like very specific words that could be changed to make sure that the meeting, the meaning of the lesson wasn't misunderstood and stuff like that. And I also remember there was positive feedback we were allowed to give. And I said that they had a lot of great, a lot of good sources of, to use that would give each student a well-rounded opinion on it. And I, I liked how it gave students the opportunity to kind of imagine it for themselves and come up with their own solid opinion towards it rather than giving them a specific opinion.
I worked on a, that was very similar to what we were talking about, about I worked on a science unit for a teacher in middle school. And first of all, I found the unit really interesting because I was in seventh grade, I had so it was really hard for me to learn. So I learned a lot about it, breakable. And then secondly, it was about genetics. So it was kind of letting students talk about their own personal opinions, but then using the facts that they've learned to back it up, which was really interesting. And also it gave them a chance to feel more connected to what they were actually learning about. And they can apply all this new technology they're learning about into their own lives and their own.
Uh, I feel like one thing that I feel like was kind of notable was like one of the units I gave feedback on was like an elementary school unit. And it was like about equal access for like people possibly with different abilities. And one thing I remember noticing was that like, one thing they were focusing on was like whether students could like participate in certain extracurricular activities. There was like, some feedback that I gave was like about how maybe they could also like include the curriculum itself.
What's something you would change about this experience in order to make it better? Your perspective, or if you think about your friends, or even the teacher's reaction to your, to your feedback? You think it was perfect? I just mess with you. Anything?
The only thing, it was virtual, so it was a little difficult. So obviously, probably the person who has COVID is but I also wish that we went through an example together all as one. I think that would have been helpful because it took a little bit to get this thing to things and to understand it myself. And I think a lot, you get a lot more quality if something you had a walk through.
I feel like, I feel like I kind of like agree with that, where like, since it was virtual and mostly asynchronous, I feel like sometimes I was a little confused, but like beside that, I did enjoy the experience. And like, it, yeah, might have also been nice to like have more meetings, just like about like what to do, really. Yeah.
Actually working with the teacher, working with the students. Might make the process more much.
Also, there were a lot of teachers that did reach out to try to follow along and keep the conversation going about what they meant to, what message they were trying to find out. But I think kind of just because it was all virtual, it was really hard to communicate with other teachers. And like, if it was a first, like, I'm ready.
Would you recommend this experience to your friend? Like, hey, you want like a few paid summer hours? Do you wanna, you wanna do this, this thing? Like, would you recommend it and why would you recommend it? And then we'll turn it over to the board to ask questions. Or would you, or would you not? That's cool if you wouldn't. Good to know.
I feel like I probably would recommend it because like, I feel like it's a good opportunity, especially because for me, this was my first job. So like, or at least paid job. So like, I feel like it's good to get that experience and also to like learn more about how to give good feedback. Cause that's something I feel like I took away from this. That was cool. And also I feel like it's not really much of a time commitment and like beside the meetings for training and stuff, there is not really like much of a set time commitment. So you can basically work on it whenever you want.
I enjoyed the experience. I personally always wanted to give some sort of feedback to teachers and I know a lot of my friends are the same. So this is a really awesome opportunity to get. And yeah, like Elijah said, it was really flexible, which if you have other commitments, it doesn't really.
Yeah. And Elijah, it was very much you on your own schedule. And that was, I would recommend that it wasn't like, I'm, I'm worried about getting this deadline. Like I knew I'd get it in time because that's a good chunk of time to do it. And also it was the first time in a while where I really felt like I had like some control over my education. And I felt like I would be leading the, not leading the pack, but helping students that came, come after me. Cause I was able to, in my opinion, ask some of these figures for a while. And I, I really think that we should also get a lot more people to do it from all different backgrounds. Just so that you get a well-rounded feedback on curriculums.
But I don't, we obviously said, it's definitely been hard. You're just doing, the teacher's just saying everything, but it doesn't really change. There's no connection to your own life. There's no connection to anything going on that should, knowledge should be told to you. So it was really cool getting to work with teachers and make lessons.
We just wanna thank you. You're amazing people and young people. And thank you so much for, for sharing this, this process. And having the first experience for all of us was pretty exciting. I feel like we were, we're learning a lot from you all as well. We're just really grateful for, for that.
Appreciate the opportunity. Yeah, actually, I really appreciate that the district like wants to hear our feedback. Sometimes it doesn't always feel that way.
I tried to, wanted to turn it over to the board members, if you all have questions, student reps and adults.
Deeply appreciative, board members, any? Mr. Harris?
That was so cool. Thank you. I have one question. How were you informed that your voice would make a difference? What's your expectation about what will happen with the input you submit?
Two questions.
That's the same. It's phrased in. That's the same. He's phrasing it.
Like how you know the teacher will be, but what kind of information?
I couldn't hear you, but you're genius. So yeah, that was.
I don't actually know. That's a good question because now I'm wondering like, what if they just don't listen to me? It's nice that I got to say something. It's my voice is not there, but I don't actually know if it's influential.
Closing the circle sounds like a process. I mean, I know anecdotally that the teacher, thank you so much. I incorporated it, but it would be great to know. Yeah.
I can assure you it was influential, whether you see the book closed or not, the data I can share. Grace, I see your hand. Yes.
I just. Just say it myself. I am, I appreciate that you guys did the work and gave feedback to the curriculum. And appreciate the district gave the opportunity to do that. And I'm just looking forward to and hoping to see that our students' feedback is translated into our curriculum.
Yes, please.
Uh, I think this is really cool. This is something uh. The idea of having students involved in curriculum has been like one of the founding ideas for LACS. So it's cool to see this in the wire from the district. Um, and yeah, I just think it's really cool. I'm glad like having discussions about classes that you're not in. And like allows students to actually get like a broader look. I'm like, hey, well, this is going on. Like here, even though like you're not in the setting. Like I think it gives like a really important lens. That kind of look at it like a bird's eye, like, hey, like you don't realize on the moment, some of the things happen. Um, so yeah, I think this is fantastic. And I really love it.
Uh, so I just have a few questions logistically, I guess mostly for really in there. So how many students participated in this?
Oh, we got to like twenty-five or thirty kids.
And then, so teachers were asked to voluntarily submit curriculum for student feedback.
Well, it was part of the process. It was embedded in this year's anti-marginalization curriculum writing unit. They would know that we were inviting students to look over and give feedback. And, and the, the input we got from teachers when they attended other professional development that wasn't anti-marginalization. Curriculum writing was where are the students? And how are they going to be partnering with us, which was. A real credit to the, to our teachers. And to the kids, and to the kids, yeah.
And so it's planned as teachers do this next summer.
Yes, and I wanna, I would be remiss if I didn't thank um Suki Tabor and Trudy. Um, on the Itica Youth Bureau who helped give the training. Um, and fill out, complete the paper, work, working papers that students completed. Some of the mandatory trainings associated with joining the workforce. They facilitated that for us and it was wonderful.
And for those who are newer to the board, Mary Secured, a multi-year, multimillion dollar. No, thousand, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Four hundred and three thousand a year.
Yeah, five years.
Uh, to help us pay. Yeah. That's very.
So I know that you had asked a couple of questions. The one question that I feel like I have to ask is. If you had to select a, a key takeaway, something that you're walking away from with this experience, um, which you willing to share?
My July your mention, I feel like I learned a lot about giving feedback and giving good and constructive feedback from systems. Um, that's my main take to our.
My takeaway is that there's hope, there's hope. It's good. I, that I just gonna have like some of the best education. And hopefully it'll spread, like we can get it simple for rest of the state, rest of the country.
I really think I think that one of my, when you guys, you actually do care a lot of other students, like what their.
I feel like I also. Yeah, I feel like my main takeaway was also kind of like learning how to give good feedback. I feel like that was well.
I think our next lesson would be to have our students do a workshop for the board about how we should give good feedback. A skill, so. What an incredible experience. And you all got paid?
Yes.
Board members or board reps, any other questions?
Just want to, no question, but to point out that you commented that you'd like to see more synchronous in this. See classes were synchronous. And I experienced some of that at LACS. At my time there as a liaison. I remember one particular day, I randomly did that. Social studies, teacher to math teacher together about the assist or disproportionate concentration. Using math, pie charts, medians, averages. And all kids will talk about full engagement. Zoom in because suddenly it was something tangible to the kids and relatives. I didn't, so there's a lot of power happening across powerless classes.
Thank you very much. That was fantastic. Thank you for learning more. I appreciate it. Fantastic. Thank you. This topic is approved. Thank you. It's always great to hear about those kind of interview. We can continue on with our agenda. We are on to agenda item five point three, student reps. And we decide which order we can play rock, paper, scissors, how do you want?
I have no. Uh, I guess I can probably talk about curriculum stuff because uh last week we had an episode talking about. Uh, students like discussing curriculum, actually. Uh, kind of curriculum creating of how teachers and students could connect and give feedback. On uh like their classes in the moment of maybe like having, there's multiple different ideas came out of it. It's still like a work in progress proposal. Um, but maybe like once a semester, students have a conversation with their teachers, taking class period and discussing the class of. What could have been added last semester and what could be added in the next semester? Uh, so like in social studies setting, talking maybe about like US history, what? It's a, it's a curriculum that's kind of been set up by the state, but there is some parts of it that some students wanted to learn that, that uh. We had had a conversation about that, but kind of infiltrating that throughout the curriculum at LACS. So kind of being a requirement of our schools and our teachers. Um, that is something that we talked about. We have not come to a conclusion yet, but we're, we're in progress. Uh, based in history, a social studies class is hosting an event on Sunday. It's kind of intellectual fundraiser. I talked about this last time too, but it's happening now on Sunday. Uh, two o'clock, we're having a silent auction. Uh, multiple local ethical businesses have donated items to be bitted on. Uh, it's gonna be cool. You guys should come because I'm also in it. So I'm excited. Our social celebration is next week before winter break on the final day. All of the school comes together and uh well sits with their family groups and has lunch together. We kind of celebrate solstice. We usually have some, some of outdoor bonfire. It's one of the most like. Kind of memorable parts of LACS, at least in my opinion. I have a lot of memories of it and I'm excited to see it this year. Uh, we had a art show in cult here at IHS for our making art relevant class and our studio portfolio, our classes. Uh, and it was awesome. You guys have been one. But I understand that you guys had to be here, but you know, it was cool. Uh, the side base council has made a return officially. We saw Sean, which thank you for being back. Uh, service council, subscribe it. It's kind of, it, it's kind of like a, it's council. It's kind of like the overarching people of LACS come together to talk about the school. Um, certain issues or just certain cool things of how we can make the school better. Uh, it's a really crucial part of our school that we have had for the past couple of years. And a group of students last year and some of this year has really fought to bring it back. And it's you now. So. That's kind of cool. Uh, then tomorrow we have an ASM about how to properly do a brand acknowledgement. To our school and how we want to do it, basically. Uh, yeah, that's all this is right now.
Fantastic. So, I guess.
Yeah, so we were really excited to hear the lively discussion about the code of conduct before this meeting. Um, it's great that the board has been working with students and staff to help draft this new code of conduct. Uh, which we heard support for from students. It was also really great to hear the board working with students. Um, in the previous presentation for learning for ICSD. Um, at IHS, we've been working with Mr. Trumbull and the Student Activities Director, Ms. Dobmeyer, to implement increased support for student government. We hope to form a committee of student leaders to help streamline systems for planning events and fundraising. And a new improved handbook is also being developed for class and club officers. It will also hopefully include information on planning field trips, which haven't really been occurring for the past few years. Um, because of COVID. Orientations might also be implemented for new class and club officers, which is really good. Since their work has really far reaching effects on IHS, um, a lot of things organized by class officers especially. We've also been discussing IHS's new drop-off and pickup recommendations for students and caregivers and potential dangers regarding parking of Lake Street due to cars being parked on the street. And potential effects of the high volume of cars parked there after school on certain students who may need to board buses from that location. Mr. Trumbull did mention that the parking lot there will be soon redone to resemble the front parking lot with like a separate lane for buses. So we hope that that will at least alleviate some of these issues. And we've been continuing to discuss mental health days with Mr. Trumbull and Ms. Grover, and we will be having another meeting with Ms. Grover next week. And in the meantime, students at IHS are looking forward to winter break and the five weeks hence this further.
Uh, next year's some upcoming events and updates at our school. So first, we would like to invite everybody to attend two concerts by the IHS musicians in the next couple of weeks. Our band concert is tomorrow, December thirteenth at seven thirty PM. And our orchestra concert is the very next week on December twenty-first, also seven thirty. The December issue of the Tattler was released last week and it was the final issue of the tone. It's here. We are now working and are excited for the literary issue, which was released once a school year. And finally, our IHS economy is currently being fueled by big sales. So last week, there was coincidentally a bake sale on every single day of the week. With different clubs hosting on each day in an attempt to fundraise for club activities and competition fees, including those ones today. Many groups are preparing for a competition season and are trying to avoid running low on funds by organizing these sales. According to some clubs, there are no available bake sale openings until the last day before break.
I would like to follow up about the issue concerning lowering the voting age in the street bill actually. The students at our school and uh the reps last year brought this up, stating that sixteen to seventeen year olds should be able to. Vote for the people directly in charge of making decisions that can hugely impact their education and personal life. Ms. Bergman, our advisor forwarded a email that Eldred, I believe, wrote saying that the. Order of Education had decided to no longer continue with the Legislative Action Committee's work. Uh, we are still passionate about making this a reality and wonder why this work was stopped. I might have mentioned this in a previous meeting, but students and teachers are sicker than ever. There are many students that are out sick and you can't get through the hall without hearing someone coughing or screeching. For example, my friend here, Lindsay, who did an awesome job presenting, is unfortunately sick, but she is pushing there to do school. Obviously, this is very unfortunate as being sick is not fun at all, especially having to make up work. Sickness, of course, comes with the seasons, but there is one thing at our school that is exacerbating this problem. I hate to keep mentioning this, but it is our bathrooms. Uh, there are numerous bathrooms locations where none of the seats work, so students are unable to wash their hands. Which is one of the best ways to avoid getting sick and spreading illness. I'm glad to hear from Mr. Bryman that the renovation of G bathrooms is starting tomorrow. Um, so that's a good thing. Uh, we are looking forward to the timely renovation of all of our bathrooms as most of them are not. Up to human use. Um, and as a side note about transparency, students would also appreciate a prior notice. Before we find out that a highly used bathroom will not be in use for at least months. With so many teachers being out because of sickness, we have noticed that there's a lack of substitutes. Some teachers at IHS have come in to teach while not feeling well because they couldn't find a suitable substitute. Some are saying that they are running around the building because they're so busy. There is just. There is sometimes no teacher in study halls. And there has been at least one class that has been left with neither a teacher nor a substitute for a full period. This greatly impacts students' learning and contributes to a struggling teacher support system. I understand that our district is working hard to hire teacher, staff and aides for numerous vacant positions. But we all would also urge you to look into finding more substitute positions.
Mr. Ryan told us that the technology department is working on for cap piloting. A student ID system to access the welcome center next year. We noticed a poster about asbestos abatement at IHS. Here's a holiday food drive at IHS High School. And Hanukkah falls on winter break this year, which is exciting. And I think that wraps up twenty twenty-two part of this school year. The conference progress has been made on many fronts and we can't wait to meet again next year.
And maybe we'll be meeting before the next year, but the heck, we can't wait. That's fantastic. Um, thank you, uh, ethical reps and LACS reps, uh, board responses.
Um, I can address two things. Um. The Legislative Advocacy, Advocacy Committee dissolved because we just don't have the resources to keep going at this time, right? We, we are short a member and um, much like everybody, uh, we're all doing a lot here and like hanging on a string. I, I, if I may speak for us, like, we're tapped out too. Um, but it's not that we're not passionate about the voting age. And it's not that it's not something we can explore. But I'm, I, I think that we as a board need to discuss where we could take on that work and how to address it. Uh, and perhaps that's something we can look into. Um, on our next agenda. Um, the other thing, uh, and I love that you brought this up because we just had our first inclusion committee meeting today. Um, and in that meeting, uh, one of the big discussions was parking. Um, and something recognized in many of our facilities is the mess that is created. In not just IHS, but other schools' parking lots. Um, what was mentioned in our meeting is not so much, you know, safety of all students, but the lack of. Accessibility to accessible spaces. Everyone, I, I see this personally at the WIT and at the high school where. People are there to pick people up and they are blocking accessible spaces. So the people who need those spaces the most can't use them. I've heard from parents who have to get to these places obscenely early to pick up their child. Who really needs, you know, safety and accessibility and to be escorted to the car, whether it be a wheelchair or, or, you know. Sensory issues or whatnot. And so this is something we want to explore and bring up at facilities. Um, but also I, I would love if we can find a way to be included in this conversation. Uh, one of the solutions that we kind of tossed around today would be to just alert people to look at other places to pick students up. To free up spaces in the parking. And it sounds like that might not be the best solution due to Lake Street. But I think this takes, um, I think this is going to take some community collaboration. I also think that we're gonna have to really tap into. Walking, right? So students who can't walk a distance can use those spaces and maybe we look at. Students who can to get picked up in an alternative spot. So the ones who really need those spots can access them. But it, but it's um in that conversation, this is a very long-winded response, I apologize. We also acknowledge that um. A lot of the parking areas at every school are outdated and it's something we need to examine. And think collaboratively, collaboratively about how we can change them to be more productive. But that's going to take effort. And so your input in this would be really appreciated.
Other board responses.
Uh, again, as for the voting age, that's often happened in this community.
We hit up several groups working on the same issue. Barbara, I think she's here, trying to connect you guys with, uh, Jeff Herman. Who had seen Ben and Jerry's foundation. Does a lot of incredible work around the world. You know, he's working with a group of adults to, uh, and young people to focus on the same issue. Fortunately, I can't remember the name of that group. It is just lower the rope. But we plan to keep you guys plugged in. And I think this board still have a role to play in our superintendent as we learn where the committee was in process. Us going to Albany and London. Sitting there with a superintendent since, uh. Attire and they know if you spend time away from you, they'll talk to them. Thanks, Matt. Magic can start happening. Imagine that. We didn't know the spec. As for the, but we'll continue to work on. So if I, if you don't hear from me. Uh, let's say Black Friday, ask Barbara to reach out to me next week. I'll make sure I catch you guys and. Get us in.
I just wanted to add that when we talked about. Made the decision to solve Legislative Action Committee, it was noted at the time and is still the case. That a bill to lower the voting age is in the state legislature right now. So that that we have. A bill to push onto it, it's already there. So we just want you to know that we were aware of it. We discussed it and, um. It was, it was not something that we needed the Legislative Action Committee to do anymore.
Actually, we still need to push that down.
They'll, they'll take that for granted. That's still the grand opening night. And I should also add, Grace said, we did research. How does this play out in other states that have passed legislation? California. Another western state again, Colorado. Colorado. It's not an overnight panacea.
Yeah.
State decision has to be adopted and implemented. Turns out to be challenging, but people run board elections, it won't be us. Same people run our, our election. So. Just be patient. Guess what I'm saying is even if we get this done. It's maybe a year or two, but then you see the results.
Yeah.
You should just be upfront.
So just for clarification, does the voting age specifically for like districts?
No, no. Aaron just pulled up a map of all the states. If you don't mind reading them.
Yeah, so it's vote sixteen U S A, um, state legislatures to consider bills to lower the voting age to sixteen. This was in twenty twenty one, so clearly outdated. There's Oregon, Utah, New Mexico, Georgia, Kentucky, New York, Massachusetts, Connecticut and Maine.
Those are folks with.
Yeah, so they're looking to lower it. So I'm going to try to, that's the first thing that popped up. I'll see if I can see who is actually dumber.
So granted, that is a questionable point that being asked, um. There are multiple folks in this community doing things at the same time. So to my colleague, Mr. Harris, I apologize that I wrote to our assembly person. Anna Kells earlier today to re-raise this issue because we're scheduled to meet. And then something happened, oh, you know, at the end of last school year. Um, and also in that email, not only talking about the voting age sixteen specifically. And school district elections was the focus that I reiterated to our assembly person. But also to talk about the bill of including mental health days, um, for students, right? So asking if we could have space to have both of those conversations simultaneously. Mr. Harris, I apologize that I didn't copy one that because I took the information from what you sent to our assembly person.
You are good at this.
I, I.
With people without me.
And Grace, I think also you're hearing from board members is the board did not agree to dissolve that work. The board agreed to dissolve that committee. And we had an open conversation that we could find other ways in which to do that work. So we understand. The necessity of political and legislative advocacy. And so this is one of the examples and with all. Great humility, your voice carries much more weight than our voice does, right? So meeting with students is much more important than meeting with board members and that's what I'm hoping to facilitate. I'll make sure I loop any board members that want to be a part of that and I'll make sure that Ms. Burman is looped in as well. I imagine it'll be sometime in January or February when we have a meeting to address both of those issues. You're already connected to both those as some of your colleagues are. So we'll follow up with that as, as soon as we possibly.
Let me just end by saying this group has the capacity and means to take students to all. Right, right. We did not have as a committee, so it might be really good to get you guys in touch with that. You probably feel a lot more power from that. You're, you're part of the actual action.
The, the staffing issues is, um, something. That we all continue to hear and every single field that one can imagine. Um, I know I've said before, we were having a conversation with Chris Malcolm. Um, and I, he was talking about the significant number of availabilities and openings that, uh, a local business has. And for folks who are paying attention this morning on W H C U radio, the superintendent of drive school. Uh, in essence, was pleading with folks to come work for them. Right? So this isn't an I C S D issue. Doesn't mean we can't find innovative ways to solve it. But this is regional, this is state, this is national, um, and we have to continue just to. You know, to work to, to try to, to solve this issue. We're aware of subs, we're aware of bus drivers, we're aware of our cafeteria support staff, we're aware that everyone is stretched in. And similar to what, um, my colleague Aaron said, that also, you know, people are also. You know, trying to do eighty five different things at once, still maintain family sanity, right? Health and those sorts of things. So appreciate that. Sorry, it just so happens that I was on the, uh, phone earlier today with folks of the Guyanese Nation talking about land acknowledgement statements. And they gave me two pieces of advice that I, I want to share. One, that most of the statements they read are offensive because they're focused in past tense language. And never present tense language or more importantly, future tense language. Which was something that when I read through a bunch of statements that I've seen as examples. It was very evident, right? As if folks, as we know, aren't with us, right? Here. Um, and the second recommendation was to consider a living land acknowledgement, not just a land acknowledging. So it's not just about what was stolen, but how do we appreciate the land that we are currently on as well? So I'll share that in writing with you what was sent to me, but I thought they're all constructive. Particularly giving friends coming from the nations of the folks that were, were speaking. I'm looking forward to reading and learning about L A C S's. Any other board member responses? To our student reps, thank you again. Always informative, help us think in different ways, greatly appreciative. Uh, fantastic. Um, we will move on if we can do so to the consent agenda, item six point one. We did change.
I, I. Students admitted some previous meeting as presented.
Moved by Pat, second by Jill. Are there any need to speak, uh, to any of the items that are on the consent agenda? Looking, um, at, oh, yeah, the group, but.
There are two. One of them is.
Yep, that's the end field roof replacement.
So, um, infield roof replacement, that one, uh. Just as a reminder, right? We have to follow laws around bidding, right? So when, um, we engage contractors to do the work, there are certain, um, avenues that we can take to be able to, um, have contractors. Um, either put in a bid or a proposal and then receive a contract from us. And it's very prescribed by law. And so, um. Roofing is one of those examples where you can do, uh, like a bidding process where people put a sealed bid in, you open them and then you see. What they put in in terms of what the cost would be. Or if they are part of cooperatives, you can actually utilize the cooperative. They've already been sort of vetted that they will give sort of pricing that meets the standards by law. And you can interview them and meet with them. You still get information, you still get a proposal like a bid. Um, it's not in a sealed document, but you actually receive this proposal and you can interview them and walk through that. We went through the bid process because with the roofing, we've done so much roofing now. Um, we feel that a lot of the folks that we have utilized and the companies have utilized were on this cooperative. Um, and so mech mechanism. And so what you see before you is a, the lowest, uh, proposal. Um, and be a rooper that we've used before. So that's why that's on.
Any questions from board members about the incentive of the. Comments? Hearing none. We'll call the question all in favor. Ask you to spray over that as a hand as a yes. I don't know how to say this for colleagues. That is our agenda. Oh, I, I was definitely trying to. It was absolutely unintentional. I wish I could even act like I did it. My apologies. Uh, we will move to the super attention for Dr. Brown. Please, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for the time on the agenda and the extra time to reflect on my experience. Um, much of my fun has been taken, but what I do wish to underscore some things that I've already missed here. Uh, Kurt, the I C F P legacy has been mailed out to retirees throughout our community. This is what it looks like when it shows up into your mailbox. Awesome. That's what I want to hear. Appreciate it. And some great information will be in it. Is in this one, it will be in future, uh, iteration of the legacy, including what's happening with healthcare. I've always appreciated this force approach to making major decisions, particularly decisions that. That mean millions of dollars over time. And your, your decisions have always been informed by good information, which includes stories and facts and data. This legacy actually talks about the kind of data we're going to be capturing as the board makes a decision that have major implications. We will be doing an audit, an audit of denials, an audit, they can see a dollar in the denial, audit of savings. We'll be surveying posts to get accurate information about people's experiences. And we are considering other options as we speak. This is an ongoing issue and something that we have talked to many, many, as, as. Moira said, many folks who are experts in the field as we look to think as well. So again, I appreciate the board's deliberate and thoughtful approach to this. In that way, I'll invite Dr. Bryman to share a quick update about that. Grace knows as much as we do it at this point, we should have a few other items to stick up.
We're, we're really excited that we have this great opportunity, uh, to move up, uh, bathroom construction, G and an H. But, uh, last week we saw a wonderful opportunity, especially because of some things that were happening in our bathrooms. To capitalize on momentum and start our work in G. So really excited that work is going to start tomorrow. On, on, um, our bathrooms in G and, um, we're turning over to camp, we're, we're going to turn over to campus construction. And G this week will, will conduct pre-demolition, uh, fixtures and block walls will be removed. And then we will, um, set up, uh, and then an abatement contractor, this is where asbestos comes in. The, uh, abatement contractor will set up and set up containment of the spaces. I'm happy to talk more about asbestos at some point in the future.
I think you gave me the first thing to move over.
The students, the students have asked, the students have had, uh, some questions about asbestos. So, um, so we're really excited about the work, uh, that's happening. We, um, Emily and I worked on a map of the bathrooms that will be in use for the students. Um, we're going to be working very hard. We are, our plumbers looked. At all the fixtures this week. We're going to make sure all the sinks are working and that no bathrooms will be closed. Outside of G, um, this will impact four bathrooms in G. Um, and then when they are complete, we're going to move to H. Um, and that's likely to happen in February. But, but we're really excited to move up this timeline, especially because of a lot of the concerns we've had about the bathrooms. And, um, but I'm also happy to take, um, bathroom questions as well. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just had one question. So around when will like the construction finish? And will they, will the bathroom be entirely unusable during this period?
Yeah, all four, uh, all four bathrooms will be unusable, um, during this period. We're, we're hoping that it all, it all, um, be complete, um, sometime in February. Okay, and that includes demolition, abatement and then construction.
On my prior comment about transparency, will students be notified of this?
I, I saw that, uh, Principal Trumble sent out an email this evening about this to all students on the high school this year. So, um, but. And I'm sorry about the communication. We had an opportunity to move as fast as possible with getting the bathrooms. Complete. We think since there are four bathrooms and there's many other bathrooms in, in Ithaca High School. Um, that it shouldn't have, uh, too much of an impact. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
I mean, I knew because. They're delightful. Does this mean that, uh, the. Single bathroom on the other side?
Won't be impacted at all. Oh, the only, the bathrooms that will be impacted are the boy girl bathrooms. Um, on the first floor and sorry if I wasn't more specific about it. And the, the boy girl bathrooms on the second floor. Okay, but the single use bathrooms won't be impacted at all. Yeah.
Is it G and H or will the other bathrooms be?
Uh, right now it's G and H, but we are looking at, we are in conversation about other bathrooms. Right now, that actually we've had a meeting. Um, I, I also want to thank Amanda Verba and, um, the campus construction team for really. Making this all happen in a timely way, you know, it's a pleasure working with you, Amanda, and thanks for, um, supporting. Uh, the need in G and H. Appreciate it. Yeah.
If you can, um, attach this to me, I want to stress that hopefully it will be completed.
Yeah.
Construction is.
Right.
Always unpredictable with a whole host of things, but I want to make sure that we don't, we're not setting unfair expectations here. We run into something that we want to, as we know, anytime we knock down a wall, we find something we were not expecting.
Yeah.
Uh, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
They'll make, it might be long lead times on doors, um, and some of the other projects we've had, we use temporary doors. So that might be something that happens. Doors that, doors that the project, uh, didn't call for. Uh, doors, Amanda.
They're interim doors. So it would be a door that, um, we, we won't keep there permanently. They will just, so what it means is it might be like a wood door that looks like a door to your home. It's not the one that's going to permanently be in storage area. To be able to use temporarily until the doors that the contractor, that we order through the contractors can actually get your own. Due to a lot of the situation with COVID, as you all know, there are things that we can't really get our hands on. Um, into supply chain issues or staffing issues or issues in companies that. You know, manufacturing challenges with our workforce is, as Dr. Redwell mentioned, they're suffering too. Um, and so things like lighting, aluminum doors, there we have interim strategies that we can use. Until the permanent strategies.
So the, the interim bathroom doors, if they had to be used, will still provide privacy.
Yeah.
So there's still be privacy, it just won't be the.
It's a real. Eric knows since.
Come to a facilities meeting and we'll engage in that level of detail. I'm sure Tim would invite you as well.
It's a, it's a. It's a solid door. It's, uh. We, we can talk more about it. Happy to break that out.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Thanks. Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Sarah.
How many bathrooms are there?
How many bathrooms? Email you that in the morning. I had, I actually have the map as we were, I have the map because we were highlighting, we're going to send out to the students all the bathrooms. Um, that are available. So actually I could, I could just step aside and count them. I could also send you that map.
Laura, you have a question for Dr. Brown? Laura, you have a question for Dr. Brown?
Well, I
I'll give you that.
Clarify, so the single-use bathrooms that are in G building, those are the ones I know.
Yeah.
They're open to any, yes. Because back in the day, those were faculty bathrooms. And now it's much more egalitarian.
In the ICA contract, we are required to have NPA only bathroom. But so, so we took the, the gendered female faculty and the gendered male faculty and turned one of them into an all-gender, this bathroom is for all staff. And the other one, this bathroom is for everyone, right, students, staff, whoever.
Just a tentative update, I've taken a turn. We're that deep in bathroom, for the quick update, Dr. Brightman on bathrooms, and we will come back to the next update with more. And we will be sending some dates to the board members around festival events, about festival events. I'm realizing tonight, the concerts, the athletic event, celebration of learning, you probably should be in the last one this week, so we will send you some stuff, follow up date, and hopefully you can attend some thing. Then I'll finish, again, as we said earlier, Mira, things are going smooth and progress is being made on many fronts. I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Our next agenda item is other business, not that I'm reading the agenda item. Yes, Erin.
One thing we need to say, even though this is a small room, I think sometimes we would be, we should have a microphone. If we truly want to be inclusive, we can't ask people to speak loud, that's not really proper. And it's really hard to hear, depending on the speaker.
Talk about, you know, have a good time. We've been for years now, the New York lecture hall to be a space for the board meeting. And that's a much more inclusive space, better technologies, I think that would be an outstanding place to transition for our community and for the board. So, yeah.
So what we're thinking is having all the board members visit the space and see if it's something that we think to address those issues that you're discussing as well as accessibility. Right, so it's something that we've been in conversation with, trying to finalize that space. We are nearing, I think we did do the punch lists or close to the punch list.
But yes.
But, but agree, and we used to have a microphone here, but this was prior to us also screening as well with other microphones picking up for.
Yeah, it's easy to hear at home.
Yes, it's harder to hear. Any other business items?
Just add one, this doesn't normally come up, so I am the rep here for the TSB. OCS crew gets together once a month and they get us wonderful turkey sandwiches or whatever we ask for. They offer the tour of their facilities to several of their constituent board members. Glad to be there, as a OCS board member. And another director of the Mishpoke Region. And we've got an in-depth book behind the scenes of what they do, and that's not something we're often talking about, so we'll just run through it quickly. We saw their CTE program, college and technical experience, well, I'm saying college and tech experience program. And it suits up there working on eighteen-rail-riggs, working on tractors, working on mowers, magnets and operation, I would pretty much say, so substantial machines. I think most people go about their own robbing work. There's a mechanic work that's been around for a long time. They give us a tutorial of a primitive school, which is a micro version of, I guess, LCS program. We asked some pointed questions about, you know, why a student picks one or the other. The students promised they'll give us answers about, at least from their perspective. Most of them said they just knew they couldn't manage anymore in some of the larger school. Going to be a pressure, so that was best. We saw their lighthouse journey programs. And I, I don't know what to say, except thank you for pushing, for providing that service. We hear our teachers sometimes are within with certain students with particular needs. And that's all those programs do, dedicated to those children, some who have multiple physical needs, right, some who have multiple emotional emotions. I had never seen that, I never looked on the scenes of that program before. For years, Dave and Dr. Madison have come here, and they've got some money and support. We got to see some facilities, some investment in some of the H back system, systems, classroom expansion. But this is the first time all they got to look at the academic side of the program. They took us to their food service, our component, where our kids are making the menu, serving their peers, serving the staff. Students actually manage the menu for me, manage the employees. It was really exceptional. Saying it was exceptional. When they come back this time, when they come back fall, ask us to support their budget. We'll be able to have much better habitation, because at least now one of us knows what they have to talk about. Mort probably does, because she, her nap, because you guys were the reps before, I don't know if you ever did that tour.
They, they did the tour for us and it was
Yeah, pretty, pretty exceptional.
Very comprehensive, yeah.
And they will be here this, they will be here this spring during budget season, so we'll be able to follow up with that.
You can maybe make a great student next year, but here from this.
We could probably work on it, that doesn't have to be connected to the money. Put much more to the A, uh, learning, and we'll, we'll follow this forward, officer, we'll follow up. The upcoming dates are on here, we know that we're getting close to break, and folks are looking forward to break. We do have meetings next week with facilities and finance. Speaking of which, again, if you want to learn more about bathrooms that's taking place, I recommend coming to the facility meeting. Grace, I see your hand.
Yeah, sorry, just one more thing. I want to address there is about accessibility, like in the boardroom. I greatly appreciate you mentioning that, because as you can see here, our table is a bit cramped. And if we moved to a different location, I think there would be more space. And I also have kind of a quiet voice, so a microphone would be wonderful.
I agree with all that, except I don't think you have a quiet voice. That's fantastic, yes, I, we understand, and we've been looking at this for some time, so we'll, we'll follow it. With that being said, if there are no other items, we will adjourn for the evening. Have a good evening, good for us.